Good afternoon. This is a regular meeting of Santa Barbara City Council, August 27th, 2024. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Councilmember Herman, are you online?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not feeling well today, so I'll be participating remotely.
Okay, thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, would you then, uh, call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Tim Jordan. Councilmembers Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Russ.
Here. And Madam Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda that I am aware of right now.
All right, very good. Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the consent calendar. You have some items to read, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item one, affordability covenant amendment for the village apartments property located at 518 through 524 West Cannon Perdito Street ordinance adoption recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only in ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving a second amendment to the affordability control covenant imposed on real property with the Turner Foundation since 1958 for property located at 518 through 524 West Cannon Perdito Street and authorizing the community development director to execute such amendment. Item two, license agreement with Coast Living LLC resolution agreement recommendation that council B adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending resolution number 24066 adopting the budget for fiscal year 2025 to increase revenue appropriations by fourteen one one five, I'm sorry, fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, fifteen dollars, in the Parks and Recreation Department fiscal year 2025 general fund for the East Beast, each beach rental concession license agreement. And that's all the consent items to read, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. Does anyone from council need to pull an item for discussion? Yeah, see, none in, uh, in the House? Is anybody online that needs to pull an item for discussion or talk, speak to an item?
Nope.
Okay, very good. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar. Moved by Friedman, seconded by Oscar Gutierrez. May we have a roll call vote, please?
And, Mr. Mayor, there are no hands raised for consent online.
Right.
And yes, and we will do this as a roll call vote because of the remote participant. So this is a motion for the entirety of the consent calendar, motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez. Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Tim Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmembers Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. And Mayor Russ.
Aye. All right, very good. That concludes the consent calendar. With that, we'll move to general public comment. And for general public comment, it'll be, uh, three minutes at the dais for anything that is not on today's agenda but falls within the purview of this body. And we'll start with David Crockett-Williams. You have three minutes, sir.
I came today to give you all a copy of my new book that I just came out with, and just received the copies. This is, uh, title is Restoring Their Great Love: Peace, How to Tell the Whole Truth. And I want to start by reading a review from Amazon. The first review, um, says, "Pure wisdom, must read. This book changed the way I look at the world. It gives the clearest explanation of the headiest topics, topics of our time, free energy, world peace, social evolution, by sharing firsthand accounts with the world's spiritual leaders from Americas and around the world. I had no idea how all these things were connected and how simple the truth is. It's a real mind opener, finally, an explanation of how to bring peace to our community, our nation, and our world. I recommend this book to everyone. It's fundamental re-reading to understand the world we live in. It shows us how to make the place we know in our hearts, our hearts can be, make it the place we know in our hearts it can be. It's all in the great love peace." So this started out, uh, in 1974 when I moved to Santa Barbara to do a PhD program in chemical physics. And it turned into my equations from 1974 to 977, what I think I fulfilled Einstein's vision of a simple set of equations to describe all the physical reality, all of its nature, on the run, when or where. And over the years, I learned that this is the same concept that the great love piece that the Iroquois founded. The United States tried to copy that system, the same thing as the Torah, the will of the one God, the law of the nature. So I decided to write this book, and I want the, all the presidential candidates to read it and join me in the last mile of the American Peace March, Malcolm X Park to the White House on November 1st, all saints stay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sullivan Israel.
Hello, council. How's it going? Um, I'm getting here fresh off of one of the walking tours that I give, so I've been speaking for like three hours now. Um, so anyway, I'm here. I just wanted to come by because it happens to be a day where I'm free in their city council, which, uh, won't be the case soon because I got a full-time job. Um, so I actually have something important to do at 2:00 PM. No, I'm kidding. Uh, so anyway, I just got back from some international travels. Um, I was in the Netherlands and in Belgium. Uh, I took the time there to do some research, actually, on urban planning, not just by walking around and taking pictures, but I actually met, I reached out to a number of city planners there, and they were willing to get coffee with me. One of them even gave me a tour. Um, so I learned a bunch of cool things. I wanted to share just one cool thing that I learned from one of the head city planners of the city of Harlem, which is near Amsterdam. And we were talking about traffic and commercial districts. Uh, what he told me is basically for most of human history, um, the amount of traffic that went down a street and the success of the businesses on that street was directly correlated. The more people you had going down the street, the better the businesses did. And that made sense because most traffic was going 15 miles per hour or less. And most people were on foot, and it was incredibly easy for them to stop and go inside of a place or to pull up their horse. Uh, he says, "We're basically living in the 1% of human history where that's no longer the case." Um, and that's mainly because of cars, right? Because now that you're in a car, you can't just stop and go right into place. You have to look for a place to park. But also, there's the inverse effect that the more cars that are actually shoved down a street, the less pleasant that street gets for the people not in the cars. The louder it gets, the smellier it gets. And also, cars don't actually fit that many people per square foot. They're incredibly inefficient. So he said, a few decades ago in his city, they sort of recognized that and sort of decided to separate streets between thoroughfares and districts where they actually wanted people to come and actually stick around, and that they've seen great success by thinking about their streets in that way. Um, as far as State Street is concerned, of course, I'm going to bring up State Street. I always do. Uh, saw the News-Hawk article. You don't have to believe me, the vacancies are down 12% now. Um, just worth mentioning. Also, I'm sure you got my invite to the event, uh, happening next week, a week from today, at, uh, the CEC hub. Um, I just wanted to invite you guys in person. Of course, it's my understanding you will not be able to participate in the discussion afterwards because of the Brown Act. Uh, however, if you came and you heard what me and some other Strong Towns members, and not just Strong Towns, CEC people are going to talk to, what they have to say, you could always meet with some of us afterwards and talk about it one-on-one. Um, so I'd like to invite you to that in person. And it's not going to be a lecture. It's not going to be just another SSAC meeting. We really want it to be a discussion of ideas and very collaborative. So I hope to see some of you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is Peter Smith.
Good afternoon, council. I also, uh, my friend Sullivan Israel brought up State Street. I also would like to do the same. I, I do have a question about this new $11 million bike path that we're building, uh, under the 101 Overpass with a class four bike lane. And I don't understand what purpose that would serve if we reintroduced cars onto State Street. It seems to me that Santa Barbara, not only with that bike path, but with the Cliff Drive bike infrastructure, is really investing heavily in pedestrianization, uh, including, uh, bikes, uh, around town. And I think that S- State Street being sort of the crown jewel of Santa Barbara, right? That's our economic hub. That's where everyone shops. That's where everyone goes out. Um, you know, people, uh, college kids from UCSB City College, they come and congregate there. Tourists, we had, I think we brought in more cruise ships than ever this year. And we're building infrastructure to, to accommodate that everywhere else except on our most vital economic hub. Now, there have been plans that said, "Well, you know, maybe we can break it up into the most profitable sectors," but that really doesn't make sense. We want a sort of coherent, um, section of Santa Barbara where people can really walk and really enjoy. I was recently in, uh, San Diego and, um, you know, it's different, much different city than ours, but they had something similar where, um, you know, there was, uh, I was there for San Diego Comic-Con, and during that time, they had, they had, uh, streets where pedestrians could walk on, uh, in the middle of the road, and there were no cars. And that made, uh, the large group, uh, the large amount of tourists, um, able to really interface in a more economically viable way with smaller shops, with smaller businesses. And I think that Santa Barbara would be wise to follow that example, especially because, uh, we are a tourist town in the summers, and that's a big part of our economy. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any speakers online for general public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, with that, we'll close general public comment, and we'll move to, uh, Councilmember Committee assignment reports. Uh, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Russ. I attended the Creeks Advisory Committee meeting, and they had their Brown Act training, and then also discussed, um, Creek buffer recommendations, updates to ordinances. And so that will be moving through from Creeks to Sustainability Planning Commission Ordinance Committee, and then to council and around December or January. Uh, attended the Kachuma Operation and Management Board meeting, um, went over some, uh, it, uh, updates with the Warren Act Trust Fund funds, and, um, I think that's all I have to report on that one.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Police and Fire Commission meeting at our new, uh, day center on Chapala. And I also attended the South Coast Chamber Public Policy Committee meeting with, uh, Councilmember Friedman, and also viewed the Access Advisory Committee meeting on, uh, YouTube. Thank you.
All right, very good. Mr. Friedman.
Uh, thank you for, I attended the Library Advisory Board and also attended the South Coast Chamber, the, uh, Quarterly Government Relations Meeting.
All right, very good. And I attended the Central Coast Rail Coordinating Committee and, in San Luis Obispo, and we're talking about greater regional rail, uh, better headways, convenience, and all sorts of fun stuff for those of us who would just as soon ride the rails than the highways. So there'd be a few things coming up on that relatively in the near future. And with that, um, we will move to the administrative agenda. Madam Clerk, you have an item to read.
Item eight, City Council prioritization of revenue generated by proposed ballot measure on transaction and use tax increase to maintain essential local services. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing priorities for the expenditure of revenue from the Santa Barbara Essential Local Services Measure.
Thank you. Mr. DiMartini.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Keith DiMartini, and I am the city's finance director. It is my pleasure to present an overview of the sales tax measure prioritization. The recommendation today before city council is to adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing priorities for the expenditure of revenue from the Santa Barbara Essential Local Services Measure. This slide shows the proposed ballot measure that the city council voted unanimously back in June to place on the November 5th, 2024 ballot that will be before the voters. And I won't read the, the question, um, word for word here, but you can see it here. It will be included in, in the November election. And as part of the action that the council took back in June to place this item on the ballot, council also gave direction to staff to bring back an item, uh, which is before you today, to discuss the prioritization of how the revenues from this potential sales tax measure could be used if the voters, in fact, approve of it in November. And so with that, uh, staff has developed this proposed list of priorities, which is listed here. And it is important to note that this list was generated, um, from the extensive amount of community outreach and a number of community events that were conducted over the past year in leading up to, in preparation for the, uh, the proposal of the ballot measure itself. And so this list was informed by that extensive public outreach process. This list was also informed quite simply by the ballot measure language itself. So everything in this priority, uh, list that's before you today was also informed by the actual ballot question itself. And it was also, um, informed by the city attorney's impartial analysis that was also conducted that will also be included in the pamphlet that goes towards voters as well. Um, it's important to note that the Finance Committee, uh, received this same exact presentation last Tuesday at the Finance Committee meeting. Uh, there was a robust conversation about potentially, um, considering reordering, um, the list of priorities that is on this list, uh, potentially having the, um, contributions to the local housing trust fund be listed at the top. Um, ultimately, the Finance Committee voted unanimously to recommend, um, the list as proposed by staff, um, and is currently presented in the manner of the ballot itself. And so the Finance Committee, again, unanimously voted to bring forth the list as presented last Tuesday. And so with that concludes my presentation. Be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Questions for staff. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Russ. Um, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. One is, um, if you can put the bullet point list up there. So I just, um, a couple of questions. One with, starting with, um, stormwater protection. Um, all the others are worded as maintaining, keeping, maintaining, keeping, there's improving, and then retaining. Stormwater protection is, are we maintaining it? Are we looking to expand it? Is it, what is the intention there? And, follow-up with that, could that possibly be under just improving natural disaster preparedness? And then follow-up to that, and just so you know my full question. Um, I'm, my concern is around the way that sort of Measure B language has been, has been about, um, improving only for stormwater. And so when we've talked about using Measure B for existing ma- maintenance, it's because of the wording in the priorities or the ballot language prevents us from doing that. And I don't want to be in that situation. So if you could just, the, the wording for just having it be stormwater protection without a clarifying...
Councilmember Sneddon, thank you so much for that question. The, uh, the conversation around this tax measure has been all about maintaining existing essential services. And so this item here about stormwater protection, my recommendation is that it's about maintaining the work that we're doing to ensure stormwater protection activities in regards to cleanliness, maintaining existing services around our stormwater system, um, efforts around that. And so that, I believe, is the intent. Uh, if council would like to direct staff to include the word maintaining, maybe the beginning of that bullet, we would be happy to do so. If you'd like to, if council would, you know, make an action to, to go ahead and do that. Um, and then as far as the other parts of your question, um, how this potential measure would be used as it relates to Measure B, the Creeks item, you know, that would be part of discussion through our annual budget process. And so if council would like to direct, you know, staff to work on specific initiatives. But again, this whole effort is about maintaining existing services.
Thank you. And that answers my question. I don't want to get into Measure B, but using it as an example of, um, and I realize it's different, but, uh, not wanting to be too tied, tied down by the languaging. So then, um, I guess I have a similar question about maintaining library services. I mean, in some cases where programs have been so cut, um, I'm wondering about maintaining or expanding library services? Or will this wording in priorities, I mean, I know we rely very heavily on this. We've done this with Measure C, that when we get down to the wording of it, we say, "No, no, this was just for maintaining, not for expanding." So if you could speak to that.
Councilmember Sneddon, if I could, you know, obviously, as you saw with this year's, the city's budget, you know, we're facing a significant, uh, operating deficit that grows over the five-year forecast. Um, I think what we really need to, you know, the, the focus is on maintaining the services. You know, sort of, if the measure passes, we have the $7 million deficit this year. The measure's anticipated to generate $15 million. I know the council has expressed, you know, commitment to additional contributions to the local housing trust fund. I think we need to look at the city's financial picture and really get a sense, once the revenue starts coming in, let's stabilize the city's budget. Let's sort of get us to a balanced budget place, make sure we're funding the reserves properly. And then there could be a conversation about enhanced services, but first and foremost, we need to really focus on making sure we can maintain our existing services.
Thank you. And I wouldn't suggest we expand them right now, but just that we not hem ourselves in too much for the future. Thank you. Okay, so then maintaining, I liked the word stabilizing. Um, so then maybe we could add, uh, maintaining to stormwater protection so we know it's not an expanded new program somewhere. Um, okay. And then I think just, oh, I'll save, I'll save that. Uh, thank you.
All right. If there are no further council questions, oh, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, my question is, is it possible to have a portion of this go to maintaining business corridors, um, along our city that aren't State Street?
Councilmember Gutierrez, thank you for that question. Measure I, this, this sales tax measure is a general purpose tax, so it can be used for any and all general fund type of expenses. And so the answer to your question is yes, it can be. And so it's up to the city council to appropriate funds if this measure were to be approved by the voters during the annual budget process about how this money is to be spent. This list here is a list of priorities, and so it's meant to be a guideline. It's meant to be sort of a guiding document, if you will, to help communicate to the public about the potential uses of this source of revenue, and a, a guiding document to help with that budget process.
Okay. So the recommendation doesn't necessarily be, need to be made now. It could be during the general budget time.
Councilmember Gutierrez, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Uh, Ms. Harmon has her hand. Ms. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just two questions that I asked at Finance Committee that I want to ask again here, uh, for the sake of clarity. First, um, Mr. DiMartini, thank you. The priorities, the bullets, as we have them laid out, are laid out, uh, exactly as they are in the language of the ballot measure. Is that correct? So we haven't deviated from the ballot measure that voters will see at all in how this bullet point list has been laid out?
Councilmember Harmon, uh, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, you alluded to this in your last answer, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding it, um, correctly. So regardless of, um, well, maybe say it, I'll say it a different way. Uh, these bullet points do reflect our priorities, but the rubber will meet the road when this passes, and we have to allocate the funds with regard to how we're actually spending the money. Is that correct? So, you know, the, the real sort of debate, if you want to call it that, about spending the money is going to come after it passes, and we are doing the budget. It's, it's not really, these are just the general priorities, and there's no hierarchy, um, with regard to where these bullets fall. Is that correct?
Councilmember Harmon, that is correct. This list was generated in bullet format, and that's one of the reasons in doing so, which, which was consistent with how the city council adopted the initial, um, prioritization list with Measure C as well. Back in 2017, it was a bulleted list initially. And then city council took action during the annual budget processes and adopted resolutions thereafter to further, uh, prioritize how Measure C funds were to be spent. And so the city council has a history of doing this, and there's a, a, a practice. And this list, again, was generated sort of along the same lines of that practice.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. DiMartini. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. If there are no further questions, we will move on to comment on this item. I have a few speakers that are here. We'll start out with Pat Wheatley, and be followed by Cecilia Harris.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and city council members. I'm Pat Wheatley and Chair of the City Housing Authority Commission. Our community has spoken clearly. Truly affordable housing and public safety are their top priorities for our city's general fund dollars. We strongly urge you to make affordable housing, especially funding the local housing trust fund, one of your top budget, top two budget priorities. And here's why. First, a robust, affordable, and permanent housing infrastructure is crucial in Santa Barbara's stability and its future. Without it, we risk increased homelessness, displacement, and a shrinking workforce, which threaten the economic security and core of our community. Second, the state has determined that 62% of the 8,000 housing units required by RENA for the six cycle must be served low and moderate income households, those earning below 120% of the area's median income. These essential workers are the backbone of our community, our teachers, healthcare providers, hospitality staff, and city employees. Relying on the private sector alone to meet their housing needs is unsustainable and a losing strategy in the long run, and as provider, as provider, private developers will pick the lea- path of least resistance and prioritize profit over affordability. Third, constructing deed restricted, subsidized, and 100% affordable housing is becoming increasingly challenging due to the rising, um, construction costs, scarce land, and diminishing and increasing competitive federal and state funding. By directing a significant portion of this sales tax to solve our city's affordability crisis, we gain much greater local control over where, how much, and what type of housing is built. Finally, I believe housing is a human right. Affordable housing is the cornerstone of just and equitable society. Prioritizing it sends a clear message that Santa Barbara values inclusivity and committed to ensuring everyone has a place in our community, especially the people who work here and can't live here due to the high cost. In conclusion, I urge you to pay, place funding for subsidized, deed restricted, affordable housing at the top of the city's needs list. This is more than a budget decision. It's about shaping the future of Santa Barbara to ensure that everyone has a place to call home. And that place we call home can be prosperous for years to come. Thank you.
Here's Cecilia Harris, followed by Susan Renan.
Honorable Mayor and city council members, my name is Cecilia Harris, and I serve on the Library Advisory Board. Thank you for continuing to put essential library services at the center of our priorities. As our community grows with plans for much-needed increases in affordable housing, our needs for essential library services will continue to grow as well. For this to happen, as you well know, our library depends on city funding, funding that must grow proportionally over time to meet those needs. That's why this ballot measure is so important and so critical. That's why this ballot measure is so important and so critical to us. Maintaining library services is essential to our community. Neighbors from every socioeconomic level depend on our library as a safe and equitable space for everything from literacy improvement, access to computers and internet, and the sheer enjoyment of learning and having personal growth available for free in our neighborhoods. But our library also contributes to economic outcomes, providing information and skills for jobs access. Our library hosts and supports community gatherings and events and adds to the success of those, and that will even grow as our library plaza space opens in the future. The 2021 value of California Libraries Public Libraries Report said that public libraries provide a positive return to the community, yielding between $2 and $10 for every $1 that's invested. And there's a social impact return as well. That isn't always included in the financial assessments, but it's equally as important because it's educational opportunities, personal advancement, and improvements in our neighbors' health and well-being. The American Library Association estimated for every one hour that a public library is open, the benefit returned to the community averages over $600. The Pew Research Foundation said that 81% of those surveys said public libraries provide many services people would have a hard time finding elsewhere and a hard time affording. Ilibrary is, and with reliable city funding will remain, an essential part of our community's growth and success. And the future will bring challenges, we know, and we're certainly here to collaborate and encourage new ideas for meeting needs in the future. We support considering things like co-locating libraries along with plans for affordable housing, providing library services in the future exactly where they're needed, and when we are reinvigorating existing spaces for new multipurpose uses in the future, we think co-locating library and perhaps other civic services would be a really good idea for all of us. These strategies would make our library and our community more resilient and sustainable. So please continue to keep our library central to your priority list. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Renahan.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, members of city council. My name is Susan Renahan, and I am here today representing Habitat for Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County. On behalf of our CEO, Jessica Wachandalabra, who wishes she could be here in person today, and our board and our Internal Education and Advocacy Committee, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am here to reiterate the importance of placing the investment in, in affordable housing as the top priority for any new tax revenue. By now, it may seem as though we all understand the need for more sources of affordable housing in Santa Barbara, but it bears repeating. Two out of five City of Santa Barbara households are considered low-income by HUD, and of those, three-quarters are currently cost burdened by housing, meaning they pay more than 30% of their income into housing. At the same time, the funding available for the kind of life-changing housing that Habitat builds is disappearing. Our only source of state funding dedicated exclusively to low-income ownership housing, called Cal Home, was zero-funded in the most recent state budget. New sales tax revenue is possible in part because people come to Santa Barbara to shop, eat, stay, and play, and the people who work in our hotels, restaurants, shops, and recreation facilities are the same ones who often can't afford to live here. We are asking you to make affordable housing a top priority, both to help fund this community need and to send the message that we value the kind of community where our teachers, first responders, healthcare workers, and service industry workers have the ability to live where they work. Thank you all.
Thank you. Lauren Trujillo, followed by Ann Howard.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Lauren Trujillo. I am the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation. I'm here today to ask you to keep the library as a top priority for Measure I. This priority originated from the community and should not be overshadowed by future funding debates or council agendas. Investing in social infrastructure in addition to housing and public safety is essential for the long-term well-being of our people and our city. Rather than detailing the essential services provided by the library and the incredible work of its staff who save lives every day, I want to share a letter we received from a patron highlighting another important piece of the library team, the volunteers. This letter thanks a library volunteer and exemplifies the community connection that happens at the library. This patron expressed their gratitude to their tutor, writing, "I wanted to take a moment to express my heartfelt appreciation and admiration for your exceptional dedication both as my English tutor and as a beacon in my life in the United States during the pandemic. Your impact on my journey towards mastering the English language and adapting to life in the U.S. has left an indelible mark on my life. When you were my tutor a year and a half ago, your responsible, thoughtful, and informative approach to teaching enriched my understanding and appreciation of the English language. Your ability to patiently correct my work, addressing every question and challenge, made every lesson not only instructive but enjoyable. Your recommendations for various English study resources were invaluable to helping me navigate American culture, history, and customs. You are more than a tutor, you are my role model. Your selflessness and dedication to helping others has inspired me profoundly. Your example motivates me, and I hope to follow in your footsteps. I aspire to become a volunteer just like you, to help others and pay it forward." As you consider Measure I as a solution to maintaining city services, please remember the people behind these services. While funding is necessary to keep the library open, the lights on, and programs running seven days a week, the people who depend on these services daily should be top of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Howard, followed by Megan Turley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, council members, Ms. McAdoo. Well, I'm just here today to say thank you. I'm Ann Howard. I'm the past president of the Santa Barbara Public Library Foundation Board, and I just have a quick thank you because I feel like you've heard us. I want to thank you for including the library as an essential service in our city. That's what we've been saying every time we get up to this mic, that we're more than books, we're more than recreation, we're more than just an additional lifestyle thing in the town. You know, as a society, we spend a lot of time and a lot of money downriver, pulling bodies out of the river. I know this is, as a clergy person, I know this is true. Churches are really quick to offer services downriver, feeding people, trying to house people, doing some emergency thing, all those 911 calls. Instead of spending time going upriver to invest in resources that might tell us why we're pulling bodies out of the stream downriver. So I want to thank you for going upriver with the idea of Measure I, that we might invest in things like housing, like the library, literacy for all ages, learning English available for all ages, job training, job connections, critical social service infrastructure. That's what resources are available at the library, mental health, 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 mental health, economic security. All of those things mean less 911 calls. Investing upriver builds a healthy, thriving community. So thank you for going upriver this time.
Thank you. Megan Turley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse and city council members. My name is Megan Turley, and I'm speaking to you as the Housing Chair for the League of Women Voters, Santa Barbara, today. The League has voted to endorse Measure I, and we strongly encourage you to consider adopting a resolution to indicate priorities for the use of funds if the measure does pass. It's important for members of the public to know where our dollars are going. While the League would like to see affordable housing as a top priority for use of the sales tax revenue, we're pleased to see it included on your list, especially contributions to the local housing trust fund. We strongly believe that investing in the development of deed-restricted affordable housing is one of the best uses of taxpayer dollars. Funds deposited into the trust fund can be matched by state and federal funding, leveraged, and used to build housing that will be permanent assets for the city, which, while providing safe, stable housing for our local workforce and families. We appreciate that the city council is taking the necessary steps to ensure the, the long-term health of our city. We encourage the council and staff to continue exploring ideas for a dedicated source of revenue for affordable housing in the coming years in order to begin to address the need for almost 5,000 new units that are affordable for households making less than 120% of area median income. To translate that, for those of you who are not housing nerds yet, these units are much needed for individuals in our city who make less than $100,000 a year, or families of four who make less than $143,000 a year per household. And that's according to the California Department of Housing and Community Development. We know that this feels like an insurmountable challenge, but we strongly believe that Measure I is a step in the right direction to address this need. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers online for this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Then it's back to council for comment. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I, I think I actually just forgot what I was going to say, but I had a follow-up question on, sorry, I'll, I'll come back.
Okay. Mr., Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for staff. If the, if the ballot, the ballot would pass and we would get, you know, the, the tax, for when that money starts to come into the city, where does that money go to immediately?
Councilmember Gutierrez, if the voters approve of the tax on November 5th, the new tax rate would take effect on April 1st of 2025. And so about three months, April, May, June, so about three months' worth of tax would be collected in this current fiscal year, fiscal year 2025. Upon receipt, staff would deposit that money immediately into the city's general fund. It is a general purpose tax measure, and so it would be deposited there. And then staff would await direction through appropriation resolution of the city council about where those funds are to be appropriated.
So we are in a deficit now. Would that money go towards the deficit to cover the deficit? Or would it, like you just mentioned, it would go into the general fund and then we have to decide?
Yes, Councilmember Gutierrez, that is correct. It would go into the general fund. In effect, by depositing it there, it would help with our current budget challenges. We do have an operating deficit in the general fund in the current fiscal year and projected going forward. Again, this tax measure was communicated as maintaining existing service levels, and so would go towards continuing to invest in our current service delivery.
The reason I ask these questions is I was in the neighborhood, and I, I got this question, and I just want the public to be clear. So this, the tax that would be getting, eventually, it would go into these services once we have covered the deficit.
Councilmember Gutierrez, the, these funds would go towards, would immediately go towards investing and maintaining the existing service levels. So in other words, these, this would be another revenue source to continue to fund 911 emergency medical service staff. It would continue to fund library service staff at the library. It would continue to fund park maintenance workers. It would continue to fund those essential services.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, there's a lot I would like to say, but we are on the proposals of priorities today, so I'm going to stick to that. So been advised not to go beyond that, or I could get, get in trouble with that by the little disconnect over there. So first, I want to thank all the, the public commenters, library folks, the housing folks, all of you. Tonight was really eloquent in your, your comments because it is, it's not just dollars in, dollars out, it's how we as a city will impact lives, whether it's providing secure housing or getting those who have challenges to access that going towards the library services. There's communications we had that show the value and the stories I read today. And so that's why all these are, these are on here, and they are at risk if the current, the current trajectory we are with a budget deficit. So where, where I've wound up is, is to move forward with the proposed priorities list in the order that they are presented here on this slide. And, and some of the reasoning for that one is it, it lines up with how it's written, the, the measure is written, so I think it offers less confusion. It also does prioritize that we in the council, our responsibility is to the services, is, the services that the city provides. And, and those are the police and fire, they are the library services, parks and recreation, community development. And by the creation recently, the, the council unanimously supported the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it is an opportunity where we can invest in that as well. So all these capture, capture them and in that order. So I would propose, when the time is right, that we would move forward and the, the order is there. I think it captures the need for housing again, and in particular, public safety and libraries and parks, so I'm comfortable with the way it is. And again, thank you to all who spoke because I think it shows the seriousness of, of what's at stake here.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo Councilmember Friedman's remarks, and just add that my experience has shown anyhow, this is a, this list is a snapshot in time. All kinds of mayhem can happen in the course of, of a funding pot that you're not anticipating. Things on the bottom of that list can move up to the top of the list in real time. Things that weren't on that list can appear on that, in those priorities that you never thought would. It seems to me there's a little bit of trust involved sitting out there to appear. Maybe that's one of the considerations, but I think that's what you hold us accountable to every four years and, and even in between those, those periods of time. Ann Howard, you've done this to me once before, and I forgot what it was, but I'm using that investing upriver quote whenever I can that is so like non-confrontational, non-threatening, but speaks exactly to any of these items on this list that, that do affect those who are underrepresented or just not, don't have a, a seat at the table. Great comment. And then lastly, it's just, I hesitate to glom onto anything the state says to do. It's, the irony is not lost on me that the same state that is mandating what the most at need housing is, is also defunding their own programs, or the same state that is, that is mandating those mandates is also saying, well, the way out of them is to build an eight-story, 255-unit apartment building next to the Mission that will have 30 beneficial units in it. So be careful where you want to put your potatoes on that argument, but I do agree the most need is in those numbers. It's just, I don't really see the state being a trusting partner in this process right now, and maybe that's an argument for being second on the, on the list also. So I too have no problem with the way it's written right now, and will be happy to support it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I, first I want to confirm, because this was the first I heard it, was through Councilmember Harmon's questioning, that these are not written in order of priority within the list? Is that confirmed?
Ms. Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, if I could just jump in on that one, that is correct. Unless the resolutions were to specifically state that they were in order of priority, and we said one, two, three, four, in order of priority, legally then, that has, there are no specific order. So that would be a requirement in the resolution. None of our resolutions, Measure C, none of the Measure C resolutions contain that language. So there was no order of priority in any of the Measure C resolutions either, or this resolution.
I think this is a very important point, that if you don't know that, this reads like it is in order of priority, and this has happened with Measure C multiple times where later councils may come reading the language and think that this is the list of priorities. So I think when it says list of priorities, and then it lists them, even though it doesn't have numbers next to it, it gives the impression that this is in the order of priority.
It may give that impression, but legally it has no effect.
Okay. Would it be, is there a legal way to make that clear?
The, the council could add numbers, you could add that language, saying in this priority.
To make it clear that it isn't.
You could, or, no, to make it clear that it isn't, no, you don't need to add that language. I, in my opinion, you don't need to add the language that it is not in order of priority because legally it already isn't.
If we were to add language, because I didn't understand that, even, even though I have read this ordinance several times, have watched the meetings, and until...
The resolution.
In the resolution, yeah.
None of the ordinance... None of the ordinances are in order of priority.
I'm sorry, for the resolution.
We could add language saying "in no order of priority."
Or from the following options.
In no order, right.
Or something to that effect. And I don't know if anybody else has that issue, but a lot of the emails we've received, a lot of the discussion about priorities, it comes across as if it's, even though we've written so many, you understand it, Mr. DiMartini, you understood that. I did not understand that. I thought what we were discussing today was going to be which order of priorities. So if we could add just a word, you know, from the options of priorities or something in there to make that clear, then I'd be fully supportive. Because the way that I see this list, anytime one of our public speakers comes up and talks about the importance of their programs, it's absolutely, absolutely the social services, the library, housing, public safety. This is the web of support for our whole community. And there isn't one that's hierarchically more important. We need all of these to make a healthy, sustainable community. And rather than getting into points where we're saying, well, this one's number one and this one's number two, when really they're all the most important. And if we had the funding to maintain these services, they would all continue to be. And that's what's gotten so unfortunate in the last couple of years, is trying to decide, well, which one gets cut, which one gets to stay. And really, we need them all. So if it could be clear that these are multiple priorities, or with a single word in there that the rest of council might take out list of, whatever works for, yeah, take out list of priorities and just say
There isn't the word "list." It doesn't say "list." I mean, I think that by not having numbers...
A proposed list of priorities. No, it does not say that.
Are you looking at the resolution?
We can, if the resolution language, I think Keith, or Director DiMartini has, so maybe we can just read that.
Councilmember Sneddon, if I may, the resolution itself states that that council hereby determines that funds generated from the measure shall be generally allocated according to the following priorities. That's the current language in the resolution. It doesn't say "list of..."
It doesn't have the word "list." Okay, that's in the staff report. Okay. To me, when it says priorities and then they're in a list, it says that, and I'm just basing how this council has used Measure C language before. We go through the bullet points and we say, well, that's the number one priority. And then we look further down the list and we say, these are not as important. We, as a council, have done this multiple times with that list. So I'm open to, I mean, I can suggest language, but I want it to be legally feasible. But I do think it's really important so that we don't have, every time there's a budget priority, that we're not arguing these points. If it could be made clear now, I think that would be my preference.
Through the mayor, I mean, we could add language according to the following priorities in no order.
I think that would be very helpful.
And I can speak to that, since I was both on the Measure C outreach effort and on this one. We met, I met over 30 times with different groups and stakeholders and unions and all things, talk about all this stuff. In the Measure C effort, we were specifically talking about infrastructure with the public and the people we presented to. It was still a general sales tax, so we had to include a lot of other priorities which be listed as such. But the main emphasis was to pave roads, build a police station, fix city facilities. And we had a list of, gosh, about 25 things. This one, we went forward and we were basically talking to our structural deficit. And a structural deficit is in the general fund. And then general fund is hurting on things like public safety, libraries, parks and rec, and that kind of thing. So that is why these general, I think these general priorities are all, they're collective. And I don't think we really need to, or I don't think there's any purpose in trying to change the way it's been presented in both the ballot and in the public, and in the polling data. So I think that, I think that might be even more confusing to make a change at this stature. I think that we'll have the flexibility, Mr. Jordan reflected on it earlier, we will have the flexibility to respond where the needs are. That's the point of the whole thing.
Mayor Ross, may I? I think the word "collective" is the perfect word, these collective priorities. You said it. I think it makes it clear. And just say "collective priorities" and go from there.
All right. With that, everybody's lights just came back on. So Mr. Gutierrez, first of all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little hesitant to making this list concrete because, as stated, it should be a little fluid and flexible, as we discussed just now, because our priority today might not be the same priority tomorrow, depending on unforeseen circumstances. So we shouldn't necessarily chip this into stone. I personally want to comment on one major portion of the community that's not here is the business community that didn't get to come speak today. And I see that there are points here of, you know, keeping public areas and parks safe and clean, retaining local businesses and jobs. I personally feel that's a little vague, but as I said, I also am keeping in mind that we have to not be too specific, because then we can argue the use of the funding for things that we aren't anticipating, right, theoretically. So I'm willing to propose supporting this as it is now, but just want to reiterate to staff and my colleagues that we should really pay more attention to the businesses outside of the downtown area, waterfront, because they are in need of more attention from the city. And I believe that the funding that this is going to generate, a portion of it, should definitely go to them, just to be more equitable. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. DiMartini, just to be clear, I think we started talking about, you know, numbering or making certain priorities, certain bullet points on this list a priority, because there's specific emergency needs that we have right now in the community. But my understanding from the get-go of talking about this ballot was, and part of the community outreach, was to get a list of priorities and not necessarily put them in order. And when the money was needed to be taken out from, you know, this measure, we can, we can use it in any of these, you know, priorities. It wasn't necessarily like we have to, we have to only give it to the three top bullet points. Like, we can be flexible with that list. And it's the same thing with Measure C. If we have a need on council and it falls under the Measure C, we can use that money. Am I being clear?
Councilmember Gutierrez, I agree with everything that you said. This is proposed as a general-purpose sales tax measure. It can be spent on general city services, those that would typically be funded by the city's general fund, again, which includes police, fire, parks and recreation, library, all of the services funded by the general fund. Measure C, again, was also a general-purpose sales tax measure. It has been allocated towards capital projects over the last, you know, six years, since the voters approved of it. But again, it's a general-purpose tax measure. It is up to the city council ultimately, through its budget appropriations process, to allocate those funds accordingly.
So the concern that Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez has about businesses, that's one of our bullet points here. It will cover to be able to help our local businesses.
Councilmember Gutierrez, that is correct. It's on this list. So it is one of the priorities that is currently being discussed for potential funding through this measure. But again, it is up to the city council to appropriate funds when the time comes.
Thank you.
Ms. Harmon has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, well, I think we're all in agreement, it sounds like for the most part. I did just want to say, on the point of adding the word "collectively" or adding some language to indicate that this list of priorities is not a hierarchy, I think that's a very good idea. While I totally agree that legally, certainly, it ordered in any sort of order of preference, I also read it as a layperson, and the first time I read it, read it to indicate a preference. And I think the general public also read it that way, as indicated by the number of public comments we received about wanting to change this order. So I think that would probably be helpful, even though there's no legal necessity for it, just when folks are reading it, it would help clarify it. And I think that's a very good idea. So I would really support adding that word or whatever word our city attorney feels, word or words, feels is most appropriate to indicate that there's no hierarchical preference indicated in this list. I would also add that, for me, it's very important that the list reflects exactly what's in the ballot measure. I think that it is incumbent on us to maintain the priorities in exactly the way that we put them forth to the voters. This is the voter's decision, and, you know, I think it's the most transparent way of doing this for us, to sort of maintain that. And finally, I would say the real conversation about this, the real work of putting these priorities into action is going to come during the appropriation sessions. And, you know, for me, that's when, as I said earlier, the rubber is going to meet the road, and that's where it's going to be critical for us to live our values with regard to this money. So I think it's great as is with that one change, and we should move forward, and hoping to have the opportunity to have that conversation when the time comes.
Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. Mr. DiMartini, could you reread the legal, the resolution itself, the title, so we can figure out where to fit this word "collective" in there?
Councilmember Friedman, I'd be happy to. It states that "council hereby determines that funds generated from the measure shall be generally allocated according to the following priorities." And then it lists the priorities.
So if we added the following collective priorities, I think that, based on the comments that we have, I think that would be a good thing to do. And so I'm prepared to make that motion. I don't know if there's more comment or not, but I'm prepared, if we make that change, to do that. So I'm...
So are you making the motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's a motion...
Councilmember Friedman, if you're going to make the motion, also adding the word "maintaining" in front of stormwater protection, I think that was the other suggestion.
Oh, okay. Maintaining stormwater protection to the list, and then "collective" in the location that Mr. DiMartini identified.
All right, very good. So we have a first by Councilmember Friedman, a second by Councilmember Sneddon, and Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. I'll support that. You know, I think a small nuance change is good. You know, hesitant to do anything else with any list. I sat through three or four of those community shows, and, you know, I think clearly what we put together here resonated with the community. In fact, if I had to give you my reception, it's like you'd all be asleep in the pews right now, and then the fire chief would walk in and say "fire", and you'd all wake up. You know, that was about, that was about one of the key takeaways for me, too. And then the police chief would walk in, and they'd all say "crime," and you'd wake up again. And then, but it's clear that those type of things resonate, as well as all of these being important. And I think as long as we continue to maintain maximum flexibility, because again, things happen. Buildings fall apart, rain does something, fires do something. And as long as we have maximum flexibility with all of these items collectively, then we've done, we've done our job, I think. Thank you.
All right, very good. Well, with that, we have a first and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or questions on the motion? Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will say the motion is by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Councilmember Sneddon, to add the word "maintaining" before "stormwater." And Mr. DiMartini, I just wanted to confirm where "collective" is added. Would you mind just restating that for the record?
Yes, Madam Clerk. "Collective" will be added before the word "priorities." So it would read that "council hereby determines that funds generated from the measure shall be generally allocated according to the following collective priorities."
Okay. Very good. That's the motion? Okay. I'll go ahead and do, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote, one moment. Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Mayor Patam Jordan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
And Mayor Ross.
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Well done. And with that, any council and staff communications or council member engagements? Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Ross. Last weekend, I attended the Black Youth Summit. That was county-wide, and it was a very inspiring event. Also, this last weekend, actually, that was the weekend before last, last weekend, attended the Pride Festival. Last week, many of us attended the ribbon cutting for the Plaza del Mar band shell. It's really wonderful to see that open again. Attended the Trust for Historic Preservation, the Manangs and the Central Coast local show just across the street here. And last night, attended the Riviera Association meeting.
All right. And Mr. Friedman.
I attended a monthly League of Cities Coastal Cities group meeting, and I just talked about legislation that was affecting the coastal zone. And then also in September, the local government working group is going to be presenting at the Coastal Commission meeting up in Monterey, and I'll be attending as part of that. And also attended the State of the County, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce in the county. A lot of interesting information presented there. And a walk, Santa Barbara neighborhood walks this past Saturday, did a walk of La Cumbra Plaza. Also joining was Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez was there, Councilmember Sneddon was there. Housing Authority Director Rob Frederick spoke along with myself and Matt Taylor, who is the owner of the Macy's in La Cumbra Plaza. So it was informational. Somewhere in the 50 to 70 range of people showed up, so it was a really well-attended turnout. And just provided information on the Macy's redevelopment project, walked the mall, and as well as the Housing Authority site, so very informational. And then a few weeks back, I'd forgotten to mention it, but I did attend a board meeting of the Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation here. Great organization that has provided a great community service for many, many years now on Martin Luther King Day for our community to enjoy. So I just wanted to recognize them and all the work that they do.
Very good. And with that, we are going to adjourn. We do not have a meeting next week because of the Labor Day holiday, and we'll be back on the 10th of September. Adjourned. 3:08. adjourned, 3:08.